I'd like to call a meeting to order. And would we please rise and remain standing if you choose for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have Pastor Jeff Teeples from Shepherd of the Hills Lutheran Church lead us in an invocation. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having me tonight and welcome to the new council. I've engraved you as the newly elected council. For most of our day, we're kind of always looking down or out, right? We have our phones, we're looking down and there's a good reason for that. But tonight I wanted to think about looking up, looking up to the sky, looking up at the trees, looking up at what's around us. And actually, looking up can be really valuable even to our just emotional, physical, spiritual well-being because it can boost our creativity, improve our mood, and encourage a broader perspective, allowing us to have a better view of our surroundings. The churches in Fountain Hills at the Christian Ministerial Association have invited Will Graham to come to the fountain, and it's on March 22nd. It's a message of hope, and that message will be given to kids at 1:00 and to the community at 6:00 that evening at the fountain. It's called Look Up Celebration at the Fountain, and we anticipate a lot of people from around the area coming to this, coming to Fountain Hills to hear this message. In this case, looking up isn't just improving our circumstances, but looking up to God to look beyond ourselves and realize that there is a God who loved the whole world and gave His Son to die for us. So I invite you, the entire council, to come to that event and see what it's about, and everyone here in the room too, to attend on the 22nd of March. The Bible, God's Word, encourages us time and again to look up. Oftentimes, it says, "Lift our eyes," which is lifting our eyes from our circumstances to see something greater. And one of the most fabulous passages about looking up is Psalm 121. I'm going to end with that tonight. "I lift up my eyes to the mountains; where does my help come from? My help comes from the Lord, the Maker of heaven and earth." We have beautiful mountains, especially tonight, as you came in and saw the four peaks and all the mountains surrounding us. So we look to the mountains, it doesn't say that the mountains are our help, but in the mountains, we realize that that is actually dangerous places. It was for the Hebrew people. But they remind themselves in looking to the mountains that the Lord is their help. The Lord is their Creator and the Maker of heaven and earth. So tonight, and always, we pray for you as a town council. We pray for that you could lift your eyes to see what, draw your help from the Lord, and to make the decisions, to discern what's best for our community and our town and what would benefit us all. Would you pray with me? Thank you, Lord, that we can lift our eyes to the mountains and realize that our help comes from you. May our help come from you, Lord, for you are the Maker of heaven and earth. And we thank you that we can look to you for leadership, guidance, and insight. In your name, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Town Clerk, would you take roll call, please?
Good evening. Councilwoman Earl?
Here.
Councilmember Calvi Anakis?
Here.
Councilmember Watts?
Here.
Councilmember McMahon? Councilmember Skilicorn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Here.
Mayor Fidel?
Present.
All available.
Thank you. And Town Clerk, would you please read the statement of participation?
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items listed on the agenda or under call to the public should fill out a request to comment card located in the back of the council chambers and hand it to me prior to consideration of that agenda item. Please note that once an agenda item has started, late requests to speak cannot be accepted. When your name is called, please approach this podium, speak into the microphone, and state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. It is the policy of the mayor and council to not comment on items brought forth under call to the public. However, staff can be directed to report back to the council at a future date or to schedule items raised for a future council agenda. It is also requested that applause be kept to a minimum to avoid disruption of the meeting, to maintain decorum, and provide for an equal and uninterrupted presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our reports by mayor, council members, and town manager. Two minutes. Rachel?
You got it. Two minutes. Actually, the only thing I wanted to share tonight, and this is really a follow-up from our last council meeting where we discussed an upcoming town hall meeting. So the Firewise USA has been scheduled. This is for the entire community. It is open to everyone. There's no registration required, there's no fee. And it's scheduled for Monday, February 24th, at 6:00 at the community center. There's flyers in the back. We'll be posting these as well on our social media, as well as at the community center, to help share the word around our community. The presentation will be a joint effort between the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management, as well as our own Fountain Hills Fire Department. So, hope to see everybody there.
Great, that's, thank you. We are very serious in this town about fire safety and being firewise, so it's good to have that on the agenda. Councilwoman Gail Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report that I did attend the Volunteer Expo and met some lovely women that work with their crisis volunteers and spent some time talking to them. I was very impressed with the work they do and wondering what they do for their stress after helping people that have, they work with families after someone has committed suicide or been in a bad car accident or their house is burnt down. So I didn't realize we had such wonderful angels working in our town. I also attended the Dog Park 25th Anniversary. That was really fun to see all these dogs playing together and learning some of the things that the people at the park would like to have fixed. Also had a wonderful tour of our town's central mechanical plant and with the facilities manager Steve Bartlett and our electrician Paul. And was really impressed with the facilities that were so clean and see that we have three huge chillers. And as I asked them, because they may need some work, I said, "Can we run on two in the summer?" They kind of laughed at me, "No." So it's something we'll be needing to pay attention to, to make sure that we, everybody in the town hall, community center, the library, and the, what is that? The museum, museum as well, that can stay cool through all year long. And then also, I was a bit late, but was able to go to the Pellegrini group ribbon cutting. Was a little late due to a town business meeting. And then I've been enjoying listening to the legislative updates following issues that could potentially affect our town. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brenda Calvi Anakis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello and good night, everybody, or hello, everybody, and thank you for coming. I really appreciate it. For the people on live streaming, on YouTube, Cox Channel 11, of course, live, we really appreciate the town and the citizen participation. Citizen participation is a key element to good governance. I too went to the January 22nd Volunteer Expo. When I drove there and I had to park around four blocks away, I knew it was going to be a success, and it was. It was a lot of friends and fellowship, a lot of booths and a lot of interesting things to see. Once again, when Fountain Hills has anything involving community spirit, it's always a success. I also had a chance to go to the Mayor Copa Association of Governments Domestic Violence Council. Thank you, Mayor Fidel, for putting me in that council and for trusting me to fill in your shoes of service. We did a little bit of restructuring. We consolidated some of the groups, and we're going to make it a little more proactive, a little more community outreach. And so, based on your hard work, we're continuing that work, and that was done by the previous, so thank you for that. Again, a couple ribbon cuttings, Oasis Skin Care we went to. And then, like Councilwoman Earl, the Pellegrini Group, we had our Subcommittee B meeting, and we ran really late, and I didn't make it. But even though I wasn't there, I do want to give a shout out to Susan and Tony Pellegrini, who are very influential members of our community. They give a lot back to this community, and I just wanted to just give them a shout out, even though I couldn't be there. One of the things that happened this past week is a vital blood drive. Blood transfusions are essential for individuals with medical conditions, accidents, and surgeries. The future dates are on this little card, and I put those cards back there for anybody that wants to, the upcoming dates, it's around every other month. Donating blood is very, very important. I encourage the mayor council and all of our residents to join and try to help people that need blood transfusions. I did attend the mayor's State of the Towns speech. It was very well-delivered, and it was really nice to have a moment of healing in the community. I think everybody that day was very happy. Everybody left with smiles on their faces, and so we really appreciate that tone. And so, thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. Lastly, I had, as part of the Public Safety, Military, and Courts Committee and the Council on Foreign Relations, we discussed topics including global trends and how they affect its state and local leaders throughout the U.S. And also briefing on bracing for the possible trade war. A lot of moving parts going on there, and I always really appreciate to hear their perspective. And so, once again, thank you for all for attending. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilman Rick Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick recap. Volunteer Expo was a fantastic turnout. Lots of people there, lots of people that I didn't know. Sometimes I don't realize how many volunteer organizations there are really in town, but it was very good. A-Dog Anniversary, I was there. Comment for next year? Not so early, not so cold. It was both very early and very cold, but it was a great turnout. Tour the town facilities, the buildings, from the mechanical rooms up through the rooftops. And there is a lot of potential upcoming work that's going to have to be done on both the central plant as well as the rooftops. Various meetings with town staff to better understand and comprehend what goes on in the backgrounds. And I must say, town staff has been very, very welcoming. Very embracing, very open. I don't have any concerns about what information I'm getting from town staff. And I also joined the Arizona League of Cities Zoom call to understand what's going on at a state level. As far as progress on the 5G, I met with Rachel Goodwin, town manager. We discussed the economic impact of trying to do everything all at one time and came to a term that basically said, "We'll approach the ordinance first this year." And a lot of this is due to economic conditions. We're trying to fit five pounds into a one-pound bucket again, trying to get everything done, and we just don't have the bandwidth to do that. So first phase is the ordinance itself, to strengthen it, get it back to where P&amp;Z had before. Second phase is to address the application itself, to adhere to the ordinance. And third phase is to find a way to manage, collect the data, manage the data. Tomorrow, I've got a meeting with P&amp;Z, Dan Kovacevic and John Wesley and myself. And we're going to figure out, of all the data we've got, what is important? What can we carry over from planning and zoning? So that's tomorrow afternoon. And the joint meeting, and I have one correction for our local paper. I was not appointed as the town council representative. I was appointed as a liaison. Based upon the information that I've garnered over the past couple of years, it's a liaison. It's not a super legislator, it's not a representative. It is collecting information so that ultimately, we can get the Planning and Zoning Commission ordinance worked out, get it back to town council so that we have an agreement and a vote by town council. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Alan Skilicorn?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Peggy McMahon?
Thank you. While I have attended a few meetings and events since the last council meeting, I would like to use this time to take a moment to give a huge shout out to Mike Pelton, our marketing director, for his outstanding efforts in promoting the upcoming Town of Fountain Hills Dementia Friendly this Saturday. Mike has not only worked tirelessly to advertise the event within the town, but also across the valley and state. And thanks to Mike's efforts, we're seeing an incredible turnout with attendings coming from all over the state. Mike's work is truly putting our town and its commitment to educating the community on this insidious disease on the map. Mike, your dedication is deeply appreciated. You're a tremendous asset to our town team, and I personally thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hannah Toth?
Hello. Well, we had the, on January 25th, the Ride for the Salt River Horses. It was over at our American Legion. They had a fantastic turnout, and I learned a lot about our Salt River Wild Horse Management Group. They're doing everything they can to keep our wild horses wild and free. It sounds like they do, however, have another fight on their hands because unfortunately, there's people in the federal government who wish to control wild things. And so, it's looking like they're going to be trying to lower that quota or the number of the herd again, and they're, basically, they've got another fight on their hands. So this was a wonderful event in support of that group in honor of our horses that I feel are a symbol of American freedom. And if you find it in your heart, I'm very passionate about them too. So if you are like me, please give them your support because they've got another battle.
Thank you. And like the rest, I was with Hannah at the Ride for the Horses. The Volunteer Expo was so well-attended. As was mentioned, parking was at a premium. I was also at the Dog Park 25-year anniversary. Hard to believe, it's been 25 years for that dog park. Boy, that time went by fast. The Pony Express visited the town, and like others, I was at a couple of the ribbon cuttings. Congratulations again to MCO and the Pellegrini Group. We attended several legislative updates, and I have to say that the State of the Town was an overwhelming success. We were able to get a good message out to the residents of this town. And again, kudos to Mike Pelton. He did a great job with the video. That was all done in-house, and it saved the town a lot of money as well. So Mike is very talented, and we really do appreciate you being with us here, Mike. So, thank you. And I just want to remind everybody, we've got a budget open house coming up in March. Yeah, so look for that too. There'll be some good information on that as well. So with that, that concludes those reports. And we're going to move on now to a proclamation for Anti-Human Trafficking Month. And when we're done with this proclamation, it's going to be handled by Councilwoman Brenda Calvi Anakis. All the council members are going to go down and get a picture with the gentlemen that are here for that event. So, go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not in our city is a community-led coalition against human trafficking in Arizona. We unite local, federal, and state law enforcement, city officials, frontline organizations, school and faith-based communities, to educate and equip the public to fight against the plague of human trafficking. I'd like to thank Mayor Fidel for putting this proclamation together and signing it for the second straight year in a row, showing Fountain Hills support for what's going on. And it's an international movement. On a personal note, I was honored to attend the Night of Hope last year and represent Fountain Hills, and I will be attending this year as well. And if you can imagine, over 50 clerics representing their congregations, law enforcement, elected officials throughout the state, there showing support in song and in prayer to try to end this plight of human trafficking that's affecting young girls and boys through labor trafficking. It should not be happening. And so, I'd like to, at this point, read a proclamation. And Scott September will be joining me. He was former Gilbert Town Council, City Council. And Scott, if you can join me up here. Hello? There we go. Proclamation, Anti-Human Trafficking Month. Whereas human trafficking is a global plague that impacts millions of people each year, including tens of thousands of Americans, and whereas the United States ranks as one of the worst countries globally for human trafficking, whereas Arizona ranks in the top 15 states with the highest rates of human trafficking per capita, whereas human trafficking impacts people across all demographics, all ages, including our children and our teenagers, whereas the battle against human trafficking includes supporting efforts in schools, churches, nonprofits, law enforcement, and businesses to prevent human trafficking, intervene, disrupt, and dismantle human trafficking syndicates and provide resources to support the victims of human trafficking. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills joins schools, churches, nonprofit organizations, law enforcement, federal and state coalitions, and the NotInOurCity.org movement in our commitment to increase public awareness of human trafficking epidemic that impacts our community, our state, our nation, our world. Now therefore, I, Jerry Fidel, Mayor, along with the Town Council of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of January as the Anti-Human Trafficking Month. Scott, would you like to say a few words about the program?
Thank you, council member. I want to thank you, first of all, for being such a huge supporter of this. This is the second year that you and I have worked together to have the council here make this proclamation. Proclamations are a big deal. People take them for granted, but they're important because it's a public profession of who you are as a council and a town and what you stand for. And so, we really appreciate that. NotInOurCity.org is, we recognize that trafficking thrives in silence. So we're bringing awareness, but we're not stopping there because a lot of organizations bring awareness. We're actually working with state legislators, state legislators this year to prepare a task force and to prepare legislation so that Arizona can go from the 15th worst in the nation to the 50th. And let's get to the bottom of that list. And right now, there's an organization that ranks states, we get an F. There's about a half a dozen states that only have an A. We'd like to be one of those. So we're working on that, and proclamations like this and towns and jurisdictions taking a stand makes a big difference, and you're all part of that fight. I'd like to hand this off briefly over to Pastor Billy Punt, and he's going to tell you a little bit about our Night of Hope and have an invitation for you.
Mayor, council members, thank you so much for being a part of something so critically important. And you know, it's the coalition of coming, doing it together that makes such a huge difference. And we have a special night on February 23rd at 5:00 p.m. in Grace Community Church down in Mesa, and we're inviting anyone that has interest in being a part of it to come and be a part of it. It's going to be a great night of celebration. There's going to be religious leaders and secular leaders that are going to be sharing. And many organizations that actually support human trafficking support in our city are going to be there as well, so we'd love you to participate and be a part of that. I serve on the Board of Influence for Night of Hope, and I'm privileged to stand together with my friend Jeff Teeples here, who's a pastor in this city. I'm a pastor down in Scottsdale. And together, we can make a difference in our state, and we're going to do that.
Thank you, councilman.
Of course. That's your proclamation?
Mike, should we all stand behind? Yeah, let's do it. Okay, and next we'll move to presentations, and I see Paul at the mic.
Just give me one second, Mayor. Let me just pull this up. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity. Just wanted to explain this a little bit before we get into the presentation. During our last meeting, Willdan Financial Services, they came and provided a presentation as well. But that presentation was actually an audit or review of how we've spent development impact fee revenues over the past two fiscal years. Tonight is more of an overview of the development fee process and how to develop an updated report as required by statute. So tonight, we'll be talking about an updated land use assumptions and infrastructure improvements plan that is required to be updated every five years by statute, which also sets a new development impact fee schedule. And that process takes about a year. And tonight, we have Carson Bice from Tischler Bice, who we're contracted with to overview this process. So he'll provide this overview to you. He'll be available for any questions that you have. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Carson Bice with Tischler Bice. We're just kicking off your development fee update, and we're the firm that prepared your study a few years ago. And we always think it's a good idea, at the beginning of the process, to go over some impact fee basics and give you a chance to ask questions about the process and the study and about impact fees in general. A little bit about us, we're based in Bethesda, Maryland, and Boise, Idaho, and we're the national leaders in conducting impact fees. We've done more impact fee work than any firm in the country, and we've certainly done more impact fee work in the state of Arizona than any other firm as well. The impact fee categories that the town has in place now that we're updating include parks and recreation, fire, as well as transportation. And for those of you who weren't around the last go-round for the impact fee study, I think it's important to establish some Arizona basics here. The Impact Fee Act changed dramatically in 2012 with the adoption of what's known as SB 1525. We now are required to have three integrated work products as part of the effort. The first is a land use assumptions document, and that has to cover a 10-year period, has to be approved by the governing body. There's also what's known as the Infrastructure Improvement Plan, or sometimes referred to as the IIP, that covers a period of 10 years. And it's gotten us away, in terms of Arizona, from doing sort of 20-year build-out analyses for impact fees, which we were never a fan of as well, because we all know 10 years is a long enough time. Who knows what's gonna happen in 20 years? And then finally, the development fee report. And I think that the Act has certainly gotten its fair share of criticism, and rightly so, because there's a lot of issues with it. But one of the things that I think it has done, from a positive perspective, is I think that a lot of the jurisdictions we worked with in the '90s and the early 2000s in Arizona sort of lost sight of the fact that impact fees are actually a land use regulation. They're not just simply a revenue source. And I think that the revisions to the impact fee sort of brought that back to the forefront, and the impact fees need to be viewed as a larger, broader part of an infrastructure financing strategy versus the only thing that a jurisdiction uses to fund infrastructure. It also tightened up some of the requirements for impact fees. You know, one of the things with impact fees is we can't correct existing deficiencies with impact fees unless we have a funding plan in place to bring everybody in town up to this new level of service. And so the Act sort of tightened up those requirements in terms of basing levels of service, or basing the fees on existing levels of service. It did have some limitations on impact fees. So for instance, before 2012, jurisdictions could collect development fees for general government facilities. With the change in the Act, that was made illegal unless you had existing debt. As of 2012, you could use the fees to retire that. But it also places some limitations on parks and libraries in terms of limiting the amount of square feet that you can use impact fees for, like for instance with recreation facilities. The limit's now 3,000 square feet, and there's not many, there's not very many 3,000-square-foot recreation facilities, as you can imagine. Also, it eliminated the regional training facilities for public safety, and it also tightened up some of the requirements for refunds if improvements aren't made over the 10-year period. A little bit about sort of impact fee basics, regardless of what state we're in. They are one-time payments that are developed to offset growth-related infrastructure demands. We usually collect impact fees at the time of building permit, and that's spelled out in your ordinance. We can't use the funds for general operations, maintenance, or replacement. We can't co-mingle these funds. Within our general fund, we have to account for them separately. We have to publish an annual report each year that shows what our intake was and what our outflow was and what our balance is going forward. And I think it's important to note that it's not a tax. And the reason I say that is because I've been to a lot of meetings around the country where someone refers to an impact fee as simply a tax on new development. And if, as we all know, a tax is primarily revenue raising in nature, and depending on the state we're in, you may even have to go to the voters to get approval for taxes. A fee is designed to cover the cost of something. So for instance, the town's building permit fees or site plan review fees are designed to cover the direct and indirect costs associated with providing that service. And with impact fees, we have that same type of requirement, except that it's much more stringent. We have to meet three prongs of a legal test. The first is, we have to establish a nexus or need, so we do that through the study. We document where the town is in terms of development today, where it's gonna be in 10 years, in terms of new housing units, population, employment, non-residential square footage. We also have to show benefit, and we show benefit in two ways. First is through the timing of expenditures, and the Arizona impact fee stipulates that you have to spend the money within 10 years, so that's our timeframe of expenditures. The second way we show benefit is geographically. And in most communities we work in, we don't have to get into benefit areas or service areas because most communities are providing infrastructure on a citywide or a townwide or a countywide basis, and Fountain Hills is no different. But the idea here is, in some communities, like in Tucson where we're working now, we do have benefit areas so that, to guarantee that we're not taking money from the south and building strictly transportation improvements in the north, for which nobody benefits from. So that's what we mean by benefit. And then finally, we have to show proportionality, and that's why we just don't simply have a residential fee versus a non-residential fee. They vary by type of unit, for instance, single-family versus multifamily, retail versus office versus industrial, because all of these land uses have different drivers of demand. So for instance, single-family units in most communities have more people per housing unit than apartments. Retail generates more vehicle trips than office and industrial. Office has, tends to have more employees per thousand square feet than retail and industrial. So we have to make sure the fees are commensurate with that demand. Another thing we have to guard against is new development paying twice, and that's why sometimes within the methodologies, we have what are known as credits everywhere else in the United States, but we call them offsets here in Arizona. And let me talk about the bottom two first, because they're sort of baked into the methodology. So the idea here is that we're not having new development pay twice. Once through paying you the development fee, and then through other revenues that I might generate from my house or my business that's going to pay for the same thing I just paid the impact fee for. So for instance, if you're, if you have a dedicated sales tax, let's say, to parks and recreation, and you're using that to provide capacity, there's a pretty good chance we're gonna have to have an offset within the methodology to guard against that double payment. Also, when you're using, you know, general fund revenues to retire debt, a lot of times we have to give a debt service credit within the methodology. And like I said, those are baked into the methodologies. The other type of credit is more site-specific and is spelled out in your implementing ordinance, and that's for situations where a developer may provide infrastructure that the fee is designed to pay for. So a common example of that are road improvements, or donating or setting aside, you know, five acres of land for a fire station, but we've got land within the fire impact fee calculation. And so a development agreement would be entered into between the town and the developer to make them whole so that there's no chance of double paying in those types of situations. A little bit about how we calculate fees, and I'm not gonna get too much in the weeds here, but there's essentially three ways we can go about calculating fees for the town. One is, you look to the past. We call that a buy-in approach, and that's where a jurisdiction, either through foresight or by accident, has excess capacity within an infrastructure system. A common infrastructure type we use this for is utilities. So for instance, jurisdiction may have an oversized wastewater treatment plant, and new growth buys into that excess capacity. Also, you know, we've worked in jurisdictions where, let's say, a new public safety building opened two years ago, and it's been oversized in order to accommodate public safety services for the next 10 or 15 or 20 years. And so we can craft an impact fee methodology to pay us back for a portion of that investment, and that's what we mean by buy-in or cost recovery. The second way we can look at fees is what we call a consumption-based approach, and that's by far the most popular method. It looks to the present. It's very formulaic in terms of how we do it. It basically documents where you are today in terms of, for instance, the number of park acres per thousand, or the amount of fire station square feet per call for service, and what does it cost us to buy an acre of parkland, or what does it cost us per square foot to build a fire station, or purchase new apparatus. And so you're basically incrementally expanding the system as growth occurs. And by definition, since we're taking a snapshot of where you are today, there are no existing deficiencies within the infrastructure system that we have to guard against new development trying to correct. And then finally, the third way, the way to think about this, is we look into the future, and that's where you have an adopted master plan, and more importantly, an adopted funding strategy. Because a lot of times, these master plans, and we typically use these for utilities or transportation, sometimes parks, that may have a 10- or 15- or 20-year CIP to them, and in most cases, those plans are designed to raise the level of service. So we have to identify the growth versus the non-growth shares. Now, you may get bigger or larger impact fees as part of this approach, but it does leave the town open to, or leaves the general fund vulnerable because essentially, by adopting the fee, you've entered into a contract with the development community that you're gonna build this CIP. And you're counting on a certain amount of impact fee revenue coming in in order to build that CIP. But let's say a recession happens, and that impact fee revenue isn't there, you have to make up the difference with the general fund. And so that's why most jurisdictions like us to use that consumption-based approach because less risk, you're only committing yourself to build to the level that you collect. So if growth is slower, you collect less money, but you don't build as much. Growth is faster, you collect more money, and you just have to build to that level of service. So often, we're asked, well, you know, what drives you choosing certain methods? So one is more from a policy perspective, and there could be occasions, or there may be an occasion as part of this study where there may be a fork in the road, and we need some policy direction, and maybe there'll be a work session with the council where we tell you, hey, you can go this way or this way, and here's the policy implications and the financial ramifications of each of those decisions. But we look at the availability of data, you know, how strong the CIPs are, what kind of revenue sources you have dedicated to each type of infrastructure category, you know, what are your existing funding arrangements, what are the levels of service you're trying to achieve, and more importantly, is it financially feasible? And so those are the sort of, the policy or data-driven points that we look for and sort of influence our decisions over which approach we're gonna take. One of the things that we would propose doing as part of this fee study is what we call a progressive residential fee structure. Right now, your fees are by type of house, single-family versus multifamily. And so a 5,000-square-foot house pays the same fee that a 1,000-square-foot house pays. In most communities we work with around the country, we can show through census data and linking it to the assessor's database, that the larger the house is, the more people there are, the more vehicles available, which influences the trip generation rates. And so what happens is, is that the larger units pay a higher impact fee, and the lower units pay a lower impact fee, which helps with housing affordability and equity issues. And I can't think of a jurisdiction we're working with in the country that housing affordability isn't a huge issue. It also improves proportionality that we talked about earlier. And in most communities, or in every community we work with that does this type of approach, the relationship between the size of the house and the number of people increases, and then it levels off at a certain point. And that's what differs from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, is where that leveling-off point is. Is it 3,700 square feet, or is it 5,000 square feet? So that's very jurisdiction-specific. And so that's an option that we would encourage you to consider. We will prepare the demographics both ways, but this is more of a policy choice between the city, or excuse me, the town. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about impact fees in general, or the process, or what to expect from this point forward.
Any questions? Councilman Rick Watts?
Yeah, I appreciate the presentation. It's an awful lot of information.
Yeah, it's like drinking from a fire hose, right?
My first exposure to this. How often can you change the model? About now? Now? Zero. It's not me, folks. B and Z, it was me. I never remembered to turn it on. How about if I yell?
Yeah.
Again, a lot of information, and you're right, drinking from a-
Fire hose. Came on, good. How often can you change the model? Can you change it? Because as we approach build-out, our revenue streams are gonna be lower, and I would suspect that a lot of concern is about, now we're gonna have to downsize some of staffing in order to support. So can we change the model to make sure we protect our staff as well?
Yeah, so good question. And, you know, your situation in terms of approaching build-out is certainly a consideration in terms of the methodology. So as communities approach build-out, a lot of times, you switch to a buy-in approach because you've overs, in a lot of cases, you've oversized infrastructure, you're trying to recoup money. In terms of how often you can update, the statute says you have to update every five years. But I think, if I remember correctly, because I haven't been asked this question in a while, it's either two years or three years that you can't change the fees, once they're adopted. They have to be static unless you peg them to inflation. You could have a vehicle in your ordinance that says, you know, every July 1st, we look at the engineering news and record inflation index, and, you know, the fees go up 3% or 4%, whatever the number is.
So you can make adjustments a long way, but-
Right. But if you were to adopt a fee tomorrow, you can't do a wholesale change to it a year from now.
Right. And did we get a discount on your fees because of bringing you from the cold weather to the warm weather? Thank you.
Well, I was about to say, when I was introduced, this is one of my favorite places in Arizona. It is beautiful up here, so it's always a treat to come to Fountain Hills, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. Next is our Call to the Public. Town Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, sir. I received no comment cards online. I have seven slips here for Call to the Public. Mark Graham.
Good evening, council. Mayor. My name is Mark Graham. I've been a resident for 23 years and a past member of the now-disbanded Fountain Hills Citizens Advisory on Streets Committee. I come before you tonight to remind the council and residents of Fountain Hills of the urgency to address the decaying streets. I am pleased to hear you, Mayor, during your State of the Town speech, where you spoke of the amount of money that we have spent and will be spending on our streets in this coming fiscal year, and that you hope to put the Palomino project on the docket for next year. When I last stood before the Fountain Hills Council to present our committee's findings and recommendations, we recommended bonds as the likely only viable option to address our serious decaying streets, AKA the backlog. The problem with our streets is real and getting worse. We can't wait any longer. We can't have more discussions and more studies. Those have already been done. Those things have been done while the residents and the politicians look at this. We just have to move forward. As a town, we cannot budget our way to fix our streets. We cannot divert funds from one town bucket to another to fix our streets. We cannot raise enough or create enough revenue streams in the time needed for our ailing streets. Just how bad is the situation? Let me try to put it in perspective. Mayor, again, you mentioned how badly needed the repairs are on Palomino, and the number of complaints that you receive from citizens, and rightfully so. There's no question Palomino needs to- There's no question Palomino needs to be addressed. From our committee's findings, it's going to be at a cost of about $3.5 to $4 million to do so. According to our committee's finding, and based on the road analysis of every single mile of Fountain Hills Street, of the Fountain Hills Street network by roadway asset services, Palomino, with a quality rating of a C, represents 47,500 square yards of surface area. Would this council be surprised, and would the residents be surprised, to learn that there are 780,000 square yards of other Fountain Hills streets with the same or worse quality than Palomino? That's a huge number to get your mind around. Let's look at it as a percentage. Palomino represents 6% of the total streets in dire need of repair in Fountain Hills. Hopefully, that gives you some perspective. Palomino is simply one street in need. And if you live on all these other streets, getting your street fixed is just as important as those that navigate the bumps, cracks, and potholes of Palomino. Now is the time. I suggest and challenge this council to address our streets this year before the new election campaign starts to put forth a bond package for approval by our residents that will fix our streets over the next five to eight years, so all streets can be maintained with a reasonable annual budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I haven't yet seen this reported in The Times, but following the behavior demonstrated at the January 21st meeting, I was compelled to file ethics complaints against two sitting council members, Calavi Anakis and McMahon. I filed it. Crystal Kavanaugh, an individual, a resident and voter in Fountain Hills and frequent town council attendee. While I am indeed the chair of a local political action committee that addresses issues and generally represents the viewpoints of about 57% or more of the residents and voters in this town, these ethics complaints were not filed by Reclaim Our Town. In other words, not filed by rot. If you hear otherwise, that is misinformation. Our board consists of two people, and we promote transparency in our local government, fiscal responsibility, selective development, and a generally conservative philosophy. There was no such thing as a rot ticket in 2024. This term was used at the last meeting and in other meetings in an attempt to classify, diminish, or insult us and council and commission members. This PAC accepts local donations to help with mailings and signs for messaging during political cycles, period. None of you were listed on any of our 2024 political signs, and no one received funding from the PAC. Reclaim Our Town represents the views of many people in this town, so each time you attempt to use the word rot as an insult, just remember, you are insulting many constituents. The ethics complaints were not politically driven, but behaviorally driven, by the disrespect shown from the deists, especially towards Councilman Watts and Commissioner Corrigan. For those who witnessed or viewed this meeting, keep these words in mind from our town's code of ethics policy. Be dedicated to the highest ideals of honor, ethics, and integrity in all public and personal relations. Engage in constructive conversations and debates that encourage the exchange of ideas while avoiding personal attacks or derogatory language. Refrain from making disparaging remarks or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the council, boards, commissions, the staff, or the public. In my opinion, the personal attacks, the prepared disparaging speeches, and accusations made by the two council members demonstrated a blatant disregard for the ideals listed in the ethics policy, and they could not go unchallenged for fear that there would be further escalation of such behavior from the deists.
Good evening, mayor, town council and staff. Shelby Blacker. Two weeks shy of being a one-year resident of the town. Couple things I wanted to talk about tonight. One, I have a question that's going to help me on a project I'm working on in regards to speed limits. There's a state mandated school speed limit of 15 miles an hour, and on Palisades, we have a school speed limit of 25 miles an hour. I don't know why. I'd like to know how the town gets around it, because it would help me out, and I'm sure other residents that might know about the state mandated speed limit law might be interested in that. The other issue I want to talk about is social media and PACs, and their influence on the town and the influence on the council. When you don't get your way on social media or in a PAC, you typically resort to misinformation, or false narratives, or omissions of facts. And I think we have that going on in regards to how a PAC in town flourished Fountain Hills, treats all of you. And, mayor, I think someone on your council can have a conversation with them and clear these things up. Point in case, in a recent post on Facebook in regards to an issue that came before the council at the last meeting, they say, "It is absolutely inexcusable that by a 5 to 2 vote, the town council rejected the recommendation for local works director Justin Wendy to pursue the $240,000 Safer Streets and Roads grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation. This vote was not just a missed opportunity, it was a failure to prioritize the safety and well-being of our community. The decision was a blatant disregard for the very people who elected them, residents who expect the local government that puts safety first." Now, the omission of facts here, nowhere in this six-paragraph post is the idea that the town would have had to spend $60,000. There's no name on this post. I have to assume it's by the administrator of Flourish Fountain Hills. If they would like to write a check to the town for $60,000, I'm sure the town would like to go ahead with that post, with that recommendation. And the next thing is, is they're talking about safety. It was a study, and nowhere in here does it talk about that money being used for a study. They lead you to believe that this was for streets to be built, for some type of construction to be done. I, for one, am getting annoyed with this attitude, and I'm sure more people in town are also being annoyed by this misinformation, omission of facts, and false narratives. Mayor, please see if you can talk to somebody on your council to get this information to stop.
Good timing. Hello. Clayton Corey, 10-year resident. I wanted to address the council to talk about the Safe Streets Grant that was just brought up, that was awarded but ultimately rejected at the last town council meeting. The grant was an opportunity to improve street safety, and I urge the council to reconsider it. It was awarded to us because our town staff identified safety concerns in our roads. It was intended to fund improvements like safer crosswalks, better lighting, traffic calming measures, infrastructure updates that would make our streets safer for everyone. Rejecting it doesn't eliminate the risk. It only means that when we address them in the future, we'll have to use more of our own funds. I understand there were concerns raised about Vision Zero, but from my research, it's simply a traffic safety study used by cities and towns across the country. The goal is to reduce fatalities and injuries by using safety measures like better signage, road design improvements, and data-driven planning. There's no federal mandate that would force us to adopt outside policies. I also heard concerns about equity-related language in the grant, so I wanted to point out that in our own town staff outline, equity means for Fountain Hills, including recognizing our neighboring community, the Fort McDowell-Yavapai Nation. It has different transportation needs than we do, and that we're taking steps to ensure our roads, our walking paths, and our bike networks serve all users effectively. It's about practical steps like just engaging with the residents to understand their needs, and ensuring our road projects improve accessibility. These are actions we've already committed to as a town, not something new. And there was also concern about if the government could audit us and try to take money back if certain criteria was not met. But I think in the approved application, all the necessary boxes were checked before awarding the funds, so unless there was fraud or misuse, there shouldn't be any risk of repayment concerns. And now, we've already made major strides in enhancing bike lanes, walkways, climate resilient infrastructure. Over the past two years, we've added nine miles of bicycle lanes, and as mentioned in the application that I read, our town prioritized climate resilience and environmental justice by incorporating shaded pathways, safe pedestrian areas, and emergency access routes, improvements that benefit everyone in our community. The grant would allow us to build upon these efforts, ensuring we continue to make smart, long-term investments in our town's infrastructure. But by turning down the federal grants, we're effectively choosing to pay for the same projects out of our own local budget, or worse, ignore them altogether. If we later decide the improvements are necessary, and we likely will, we'll have to divert funds from our own other town priorities. So, why would we pass up on federal dollars for projects we already need? So, in closing, I urge the council, if it's possible, to reconsider the decision for our town's safety, infrastructure, and financial future.
As I sat here listening, I almost felt sorry for you, mayor, because now, with all your other jobs, you're the speech police, so tough job. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Beth Culp, and I am a resident of Fountain Hills. As I sat here last week and listened to the vote taken on the release of the Campanelli report, I was shocked. Not so much because the release was done, but it was done, it seemed to me, without an understanding of the ramifications of having released the report the way you did. First, there was the violation of the open meeting statute. That item was not on the agenda. I can guarantee you, if it had been, if I had known that there would be consideration of that issue, I would have signed up to speak to it, because I have a very grave concern about the manner in which you decided to release this information. I'm not sure that the council understands that the attorney-client privilege doesn't attach to a specific document. It attaches to legal advice that is communicated in confidence, and it will remain privileged as long as that advice remains confidential. So, I can see that there could be a reason to release the report to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because you could protect the confidence that way. You could say they are in the zone of people who deserve to have this advice. But once you release it to the public, because you believe that because they paid for it, they should get to read it, what you've done is you have made that legal advice available to the public, too. What that means is, Mr. Campanelli, who wrote this report, could be deposed in litigation about the advice he provided to the council. He could be a witness at a trial if the town is sued by AT&amp;T, or its insurance carrier, or anybody else. He won't, or shouldn't, be allowed to be your consultant anymore, because he can be, all his advice can be discovered, it can be disclosed. So, that was a ramification I don't think that you took into account, and it had grave consequences. Because let's just say, for example, that Mr. Aronson issued an opinion advising the council that it was unconstitutional. That could be disclosed in discovery. So, in conclusion, I have submitted a complaint to the Secretary of State for the open meeting violation. I think the consequences could be very serious, and I hope in the future that you will make sure that items are put on the agenda before they're voted on.
Good evening, mayor, town council, staff. My name is Lisa Weeks. I am a new resident of Fountain Hills. I attended my very first town council meeting two weeks ago, and I have to tell you, I was disappointed and dismayed at the undignified and unprofessional tone of the meeting. I wasn't prepared for the partisanship and rancor, and frankly, the chaos coming, not just from the council, but also from the audience in attendance. I sat toward the front, on that side, and there was a group of people seated behind me who talked and muttered, and seemed to become agitated whenever Councilmember McMahon and Calavi Anakis spoke. At one point, there was laughing and mocking when Councilmember Calavi Anakis was speaking. I was surprised when the mayor didn't use his gavel and ask them to stop. From my perspective, it seemed like Councilmember McMahon was blindsided by the motion to release a privileged document, and she was concerned that the motion wasn't on the agenda. She also expressed a concern that the designation of a point person would interfere with her ability to engage with staff and communicate with the town attorney, that Councilmember Watts was an inexperienced council member, and that Watts had expressed a strong bias against 5G technology. But mostly, that she was concerned that the council had violated the open meeting law. That is a very valid concern in my eyes. The town attorney came right out and said that the motion to release the document was not on the agenda. After he said that, the whole council should have been concerned, and I couldn't understand why they went ahead and voted. Nobody would listen to him, and nobody would listen to her. Councilmember Calavi Anakis expressed her concern that appointments that had been made by the mayor were based on partisan politics. He told her she was out of order, and when Councilmember McMahon attempted to respond to a question the mayor asked her, he banged his gavel and told her she was out of order. The entire proceeding, I felt, was unprofessional and undignified. As I understand it, it is the mayor's job to control the decorum of the meeting, and he failed to meet the challenge. He didn't control the audience members, and ensured that the council members all addressed one another with respect and civility. It seemed like he only used his gavel to silence somebody who had challenged him. I hope this isn't indicative of the partisanship of what we have to look forward to.
Mayor, that was the last speaker.
Thank you.
I take that back. Nora Leone.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Nora Leone, 10-year resident. I'd just like to tell you all thank you for the sidewalks. Mayor Friedel, you have put on your Facebook that you were thankful for the crews out there working. I'm not sure if you really mean that when I hear that you've turned down more money for additional sidewalks, but thank you anyway for pointing that out. It's good to see that you are behind all the sidewalks. I love them. I use them frequently. I love the sidewalk to Nowhere that I've heard about, that goes between the dog park. You just mentioned, several of you, the dog park, how wonderful that was. I use that crosswalk all the time, and I like it. I like the little four-way stops with the blinking lights. Those seem like those would fit into the safety money that you have recently turned down. My husband and I have always told our daughters with the 401Ks, it's a no-brainer. That's free money. Put your money in, get the investment from your company. We feel the exact same way about this grant that you have let go by. We put in $60,000 to get $240,000, if I understand this other speaker. So, yeah, that seems exactly like a businessperson, a Republican, a Democrat, anybody wants free money. I want the free money for our town. I notice people here are all dog and cat lovers. Crystal has a dog that she walks in her stroller, and so do many other people in town. Sidewalks are wonderful for those dog strollers. And someday, I will probably need a walker myself, and I would like to have sidewalks. I appreciate being able to get to my coffee. I noticed that the businesses in town love foot traffic, and we are trying to get more businesses- businesses in. You've talked about the Alzheimer's group. A lot of Alzheimer's people walk slowly. They need a sidewalk. So, anyway, I thank you for the sidewalks we have. I look forward to more sidewalks in the future. I look forward to us all getting along with our dogs and cats in future meetings. Thank you very much.
I will ask the town manager, have we rejected any funds for sidewalks? I don't think we have, have we?
Not for sidewalks, per se. It's specific.
I thought the safety thing was all about sidewalks.
Not construction, that's to do a study. So we've never rejected money for sidewalks.
Oh, okay. Well, good. Well, keep it up. Let's do more studies, bring in more money. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. If nobody has any questions on the consent agenda items, Rick's got a -- Councilman Rick Watts has a question.
I just recently learned from Paul about the --
Metropolitan Trust.
Metropolitan Trust, and I think it would be good, because it's on the consent agenda, if you could just give an overview of what it is, so that the public as a whole can see it or hear it.
We'll have to remove that from the consent agenda to talk about it, right?
Yeah, we would need to pull that, and that would become --
That'll become the first one on the regular agenda.
Correct.
All right, so we'll remove F, which is the adoption of the Resolution 2025-01, authorizing the renewal of a town of Fountain Hills' membership in the Arizona Metropolitan Trust. So we'll remove that from the consent agenda item. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve A through E.
Second.
Roll call, please. Town clerk.
Councilwoman Earl. Yes. Councilmember Calaviyanakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon. Councilmember Skilicorn. Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. So we removed F, and now we'll have that as our first regular agenda item.
We're going to have Dave Trimble step up.
Dave Trimble, yeah.
He'll be happy to share an overview of the item.
Thank you, David.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The Arizona Metropolitan Trust is something that the town has been a member of for the past nine years. Every three years, we are required to re-up our membership. So it's been three years, so we're here to re-up that membership. It allows us to get better group buying power for our employee benefits. So medical, dental, vision, insurance, and it also includes life insurance. That's really the main overview. It allows us to get that discounted pricing. We're in this trust with ten other -- nine other entities, so a total of ten entities. Other cities and towns around the valley are the primary members. You know, this buying power wouldn't be possible with our low membership count, so it allows us to get that -- those lower rates. The trust also sets the actual premiums and also the plan design, so we have the primary decision-making on those items. Whereas, if we were up with a Cigna or a large company like that, we wouldn't necessarily have the decision-making that we have. So that's the main overview. Anything in particular I can certainly answer?
Councilman.
First, I got to apologize. I pointed at Paul, and it wasn't Paul, it was David, that gave me the in-depth understanding of what it is. Order of magnitude, we've got these nine or 10 other entities. What percentage of that nine or 10 are we? Because anytime you're in a co-op, if we're 10% of that volume, if we're 5%, I have a feeling that it's a small percentage of that order of magnitude of the combined nine, 10.
Yeah, good question. We are kind of a mid-sized member, I think. There's towns that are smaller. We have about 100 members. I would say the main thing to know is that each member has one vote, so it's kind of an equal footing that all the members have. And that's kind of the way the trust was set up, really, to avoid the -- kind of the insurance game, where you get this teaser rate from one of the large insurance companies, and then, sure enough, a year, two years from now, you know, the rates go up unexpectedly. So we are -- I don't have the exact numbers, but we're kind of a mid-sized member. Larger ones would be -- Apache Junction is in our trust. El Mirage is probably a little bit bigger, so we're kind of in that middle range. Litchfield Park is smaller. Young Town would be smaller. Cave Creek just joined, so give you an idea.
Thank you. And again, my apologies.
No worries.
To you and Paul for that.
No worries at all.
Thank you. We'll move on to our regular -- other regular agenda items.
Do we need to make a motion?
We do. I think we need action on this.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, we do. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-01.
Second. Roll call, please. Town clerk.
Councilwoman -- excuse me, Councilwoman Earl. Yes. Councilmember Calaviyanakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, I see John Wesley's here for our next agenda item, which is consideration of possible action for considering extending an SUP.
Mayor, good evening. Yes, I'll brief you through this fairly quickly. You've seen it a couple of times before. Just as some background, residential uses are allowed in commercial zoning districts through approval of a special use permit. When it's approved, that special use permit is valid for up to six months, during which time they're supposed to have at least submitted for their building permit, and then another six months to get their building permit issued. They may request extensions. This particular case, we're talking about an SUP that was approved for a property up on El Pueblo, next to Ivory, for a seven-unit apartment building. This was approved almost a year ago, and it's been extended once back in August, with the goal of having a building permit ready for issue by this time of 2025. The applicant is moving forward. He's had a couple of hurdles to cross along the way. We've recently received his latest revised site plan. It looks like it's approval at this point. His goal is -- he's been working on the building permit plans at the same time, and so his goal is to get the building permit submitted very quickly, and we should be able to also then issue that building permit fairly quickly. There have been no significant issues, changes in the neighborhood since the SUP was approved. Would note that the neighbors adjacent to this property were very supportive of residential development on this and didn't want to see commercial development happen on this particular piece, and so staff is supportive of the extension of the SUP for another six months.
Any questions? John, I have one question. Do you know the reason for the delay in the process?
Mayor, it's not been anything specific. It's been a number of things. Part of it has been, he also needs to develop the alley that's behind there, and some of the engineering work that's gone into that, and some of the engineer and surveying work that's been available previously in town's not been as readily available. And he's also just involved in quite a few projects currently in town. I think it's kind of a combination of those things that just slowed down this process.
Thank you. Councilman Skilicorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think there was another councilman that was ahead of me in line, but I can butt in, but I don't mind. I actually just want to -- this comment on this is that I don't know if -- I don't believe that a residential is really appropriate this. I'd rather have a commercial development there that can collect sales tax, and I don't see the upside of having more high-density, more urban heat zone island in this part of town. So I will be opposing it, because I would prefer to have something that collects sales tax.
Councilman Watts.
John, do you know if we, with the SUP, Mayor Friddell alluded to it, that what's the problem? Why is it taking so long? We have time limits on when a building permit has to be pulled, and I believe that's one year, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. In this particular case, my concern is more around packing this many units into a small piece of property. And the long-term vision of that is having those garages converted to living spaces, and then parking out in front. Do we have the ability to prohibit that, the conversion from garage to living space?
Mayor, Councilmember Watts, the -- because of the SUP, I believe we would have that ability. It would be an amendment to that site plan associated with the SUP to make that conversion, and so that would come back then through an amendment to the SUP, which would go back through that review process.
Okay, and I think that that -- I think we've got this same issue on the next agenda item as well. It's too many properties in a small area, and I'm just afraid that it's going to turn into parking out in front and congestion and nightmare. So if we make that motion to move forward, or when we make the motion, if you want me to make the motion, I'll move to approve -- which one is it? There it is. Approve SUP 23-000006 with the amendment that we restrict the garages from ever being converted to living space.
Second.
I still have a question.
I have a question, if you'll --
Councilwoman Earl.
Are you saying nothing has been started with this at all? It's just in the planning stage still, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman, yes, it's still in the planning stages. He's been working on the site plan for it in advance of the building permit. The site plan is ready for approval.
Councilwoman Mann.
Thank you, Jerry. When we approved this last year, there was no stipulation like that. It was just pure -- there was no indication that they were going to use any of the garages for living spaces or anything like that, and I think that was because of parking issues, et cetera, right?
Mayor, Councilmember, there was some discussion of parking back originally with this application, but there is a large parking field there for that commercial subdivision. Typically, residential uses less parking than commercial does, and with the garages, we ultimately determined there were no specific issues, but we did not specifically discuss the idea of what if the garages are converted into living space and how that would impact it. But I guess I'm going to put our attorney on the spot for just a moment. This is on the agenda as an extension, without any notice that we may change the conditions of the SUP. Unless I look, the applicant is not here, so I'm not sure if that's something we can add at this point.
So oftentimes, when you have a zoning item in particular, if the item's reasonably related to the agenda item, and there's -- it's at least reasonably unnoticed, that it can be thrown in there, I'm okay with that. If it's something that you think the applicant would need to discuss, my recommendation would be that you continue the item to another agenda, so the applicant can be present. But ultimately, that's council's call of what you want to do.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Will time permit with the request for the SUP, so that what we voted on last time won't expire? Will that allow the time permit? And do you think that he would be willing to come here and talk about that? Because I was concerned about that as well, because we've already agreed and voted on a certain SUP for this.
Mayor, Councilmember, I can't speak for sure that the applicant would be able to be here at the next meeting. I imagine he would be. The -- I lost track of the first part of that comment, but would you mind restating? Because the first part, I think, was the more important part of that comment that you just made. Close your question.
Is he able to be here?
That I don't know for sure, and it seemed like, and then there's another part to that. Oh, the site plan. Because he has submitted the request, that's what the ordinance says, submit your request for extension before then six months. It doesn't say it has to be acted on, so no, it won't affect him if you delay.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I appreciate it.
I think we should get input from the applicant, if that's what everybody wants to take a look at.
May I address the council, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be against the amendment. This has been something that this applicant put in for a long time ago, and now he needs a couple more months to get this thing done, and let's just give the poor guy his extension, for God's sakes. For this council to be micromanaging things from the past and to change the rules on development, and when people come before this body, it seems a little bit unfair. This was exactly the concern and the complaint that Barche made about Park Place, was that different councils come in and the rules change. Just for this guarantee about people sleeping in garages, it just seems like it's going way out of the way for something that, again, it's just a solution looking for a problem. I mean, there's no problem here. Just let's give the guy the time and get on with his project. The time to talk about zoning and whether this should be commercial or this should be residential happened a long time ago, and now for us to come back and relitigate zoning issues that were decided by previous councils? This is a never-ending rabbit hole, and I just think -- I don't want to bring this back. I don't want to bring this poor guy back here. I just would -- I would like to put -- and I guess there's an amendment on the table, but I would just like to move to approve, as is written.
Councilman.
If there is no long-term vision of the applicant to convert those garages into living space, there should be no issue. It's not going to delay. It won't hinder anybody. And whether or not it's intended or not, it's that there's a very tight parameter. It's a zero-lot line, it looks like, for the most part, and we have parking issues throughout town, for people parking on streets, parking in driveways, and we're trying to remove some of that, I'll call it blight, for lack of a better word, cars that are stationed out there. So I'm not going to change the motion to approve with the amendment to make sure that living spaces -- garages cannot be converted to living spaces at any point. Did you want to say something? No?
Sure.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, so is there any inkling that they were planning on making the garages living spaces? Have we had a hint of that at all?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no, not at all. I would be very surprised if this owner would ever consider something like that on this property.
Okay, so there's clearly no inconvenience to the applicant or his site plan. Should we add that stipulation, correct?
Again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, my opinion and envision with him, no, but again, I can't really speak for him with authority.
Right. So I would be supportive if we were to decide to continue this, to hear from the applicant in case there is something we're not foreseeing. But if we do not want to amend the original motion, I'd also be supportive of what Councilmember Watts has said. I will bring up really quickly that, as our town attorney stated, this is related to the item on the agenda. That is standard practice. That is a precedent that has been around since before any of us, and you may have seen that last week. Thank you.
Councilman.
One last comment. It isn't so much the issue of the applicant intending to convert, it's the long-term look, because so many developers build these things, turn them over in three, four, five years, whatever the IRS says you can turn them over, and then they can be converted to anything. So with the intent of the SUP staying with the land, with the property, that's why I'm concerned about parking in front, because it's such a tight piece of property. But if he has no reservations about it, then he's just going to say, okay, and we're going to move forward with it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Mann.
Thank you. Appreciate the discussion, because it makes you think about what we approved last year as a special use permit. And I don't know, I mean, Aaron, is it really that close in nature? Because I feel like, now that we're talking about it, we're second-guessing that, that we've already approved this for him. This is an extension. So I'm concerned that we're adding things onto it and stipulations that weren't there when this SUP was approved. And I don't recall ever seeing that happen during my time on council.
Are you all looking, you're looking for an answer? Okay, good, good. I'll reiterate my prior statement that particularly with zoning items, if there's something that's reasonably related, that it's foreseeable, that it could come up, then I typically, motions change, suggested motions change when it comes to zoning items. It just happens on the regular. If it's not reasonably foreseeable, and I can't sit here today and tell you which category this falls into, then my recommendation would be to continue, would be to continue it so that there's adequate notice to the applicant. So I'll reiterate the same statement I made earlier.
Councilman Watts, if the applicant comes in and says he has no intention, can we approve it as written?
Again, it's not the applicant. It's who the applicant potentially sells this to, who they transfer ownership to, that can convert at some point. So I fully believe that the applicant has no intention of converting these to living spaces after we approve the building permit, but I don't know what the next person is. And with the concept of the S U P and conditions attached sticking with the property, I want to make sure that they don't do that and end up with four or five people, multiple cars, and so on, on the property. That's all.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Ultimately, that changes the whole scope of what we're looking at. You're changing the S U P then. Because when we grant, when S U Ps are granted, we grant it to the person asking it goes with the property. You know, we don't sit here every single time that I'm aware of and say, well, what about the next owner? What about this owner, et cetera? We're taking a picture at the time that we granted the S U P. And I think having what you said just changed, you know, the whole, the whole motion, so to speak, because we're adding to it, and I don't think that's a reasonable addition now. Because, you know, we'll be second guessing, and every S U P, S U P we look at from now on, we'll go, oh, well, what's the next owner going to do? Well, we don't know what the next owner's going to do. And so, again, I'm going to go with that mind now. I'm going to go back to, we already granted this person the S U P as it is. We don't have a crystal ball in the future. I don't think that we could sit here and put additional stipulations on him when it's already been granted. And I know I'm not explaining myself very well. I'm sorry about that. But I would personally like to just stand on the S U P because it's almost a yo-yo effect for a person that's going to come in and ask for an extension on their S U P.
John, I think you have something to say.
Yes, Mayor, if you don't mind. So I have the opportunity to think through the situation just a little bit more and where we're at and the options in the future. So if we didn't add the stipulation on, as I stated before, because of the site plan that's there that shows the garages, to change that part of the S U P, it would require the applicant to come back and request that change. If you put the stipulation on that they can't convert it, that doesn't stop a future owner from coming back and requesting that stipulation to be removed. So either way, I think you get where, to the same spot, to where if a change is going to happen, they're going to be back before you.
Yeah, so if they want to convert it at a future point in time, they have to come through us.
Right.
Yeah, so we have some built-in protection there.
Right, so either way, if you.
I'm sorry, Councilman Watts?
And again, it isn't, we have a tendency to look at the end of our nose sometimes. And I think we have an obligation to look five years, 10 years down the road, what could be? Because a lot of things that we've approved in the past have come back to be problematic. And if we can nip it in the bud, then that's what I think we should do. And if they have to come back for a conversion at some point, if they sell it, then we have another issue and we can vote on that at that time.
Councilwoman Earl.
I just want to understand, if I read this correctly, the extension expired January 20th.
Yes.
Is that correct? So he doesn't really have it right now, so we're, how does that work? Is there a grace period?
So again, Mayor, Councilwoman Earl, he filed requesting the extension before the deadline. And so that's all that we're, really requires.
Just waiting for us to.
We can get it onto the agenda, right.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McMahon.
Thank you very much. I feel like we're creating an issue that is a non-existent issue. And again, we've already approved the S U P. The guy's just asking for an extension. So to redebate it and relook at it, I think we're going beyond what his request is and creating an issue that doesn't exist. So I, I'm not for, I'm for just doing a straight motion to approve it as is because there are, like Jerry said, there are safeguards already built into it. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I'll keep this short because I think everybody wants us to go ahead and vote on this. But with this S U P, it's okay to admit things, and I didn't have the foresight to think of that last time we voted on this, right? I'm grateful that Councilmember Watts does have the foresight. And I understand that it is not necessarily typical for us to say what could happen in the future, but it should be where the council, that is our job, is to think of what can happen in this situation. There's a reason this S U P wasn't on our consent agenda. This is something that we're supposed to put a lot of thought into. And therefore, Councilmember Watts, oh, sorry, Mayor, if I may address Councilmember Watts. Councilmember Watts, if you might be willing to amend your motion to a continuance, I'd be happy to support that.
Councilwoman, Callebiannakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I too will try to keep this brief, but yeah, I just have a problem with basing, passing this tonight based on conjecture or hypothetical situations of what could happen in the future. If they did want to convert that to living space, they would have to come before developmental services, back to planning and zoning, and back before the council. And so we're trying to prevent a problem that if they wanted to do what Councilmember Watts is suggesting, they would have to bring it back anyway. So that's why I'm saying it's prudent to just approve it right now. And if our economic development manager, Amanda Jacobs, was here, I think she would back me up on everything that this body does is being looked at by a lot of people all over the state, Phoenix Business Journal, Phoenix Business Exchange, word of mouth, it gets around, what's it like to go before the Fountain Hills Town Council? And the damage I think it could do to our reputation to create, to create problems that don't exist, to address them when they would be addressed anyway in the future. It's bad public policy, and people are going to be very hesitant to come before this council with anything new because this is a council of no. And just because we have the power to jam this project doesn't mean we should exercise that power. So I think we should approve 23-06 and just be done with it.
Councilman.
Every one of our building codes is forward-looking. Every one of our building codes, whether it's plumbing, mechanical, electrical, framing, roofing, is forward-looking for the potential for unintended consequences. If somebody can come back and ask for an S U P, I don't see anything wrong with that. I think that by doing so, we make sure that fire compliance, electrical, plumbing issues are all addressed in accordance with our building codes. Without something that prohibits that, they could put anything in they want without concern for code. So I'm not going to change the motion and ask them to vote on it as is.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We did? Oh, Hannah did, oh, okay. So roll call, please. You want to restate the motion?
Sure. The motion is to approve S U P 23-000006 with the amendment that at no time in the future can the garages be converted to living quarters.
No, that was the motion. That was the motion, and there's a second, so we have to vote on that motion? Please.
Councilwoman Earl?
Yes.
Councilmember Callebiannakis?
Nay.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Nay.
Excuse me. Nay? Councilmember Skilicorn?
Mayor, may I explain my vote?
Yes.
Even though I prefer this to be a commercial project with sales tax generation, I do find that the amendment is compelling enough in this particular case to support it, so yes.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Friddell?
And I'm going to explain my vote. I'm a no, although I appreciate Councilman Watts's intuition. I think that the applicant should be heard from, so I'm a no.
Four yeses, three nos.
Okay, I'll move on. Thank you. Okay, John, are you on this one too? Cut and fill? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, this is a request for a fill waiver for 15457 East Sycamore Drive. Just again, very briefly, section 503 of the subdivision ordinance sets out some parameters for how much cut and fill can occur on a property. 10-foot by right can be cut or filled. We've had this standard in place since 1996. The code also provides opportunity for the town council to approve waivers to cut and fill. So this particular property is noted is on East Sycamore, and so you can see the map here where this lot is. First one west of some built lots, and you can see the contours on here. It's a very steep lot. They're proposing to build the house up near Sycamore. Even with that, because of the grade, it takes a pretty long driveway to work around through that slope to get down to the garages on the west side of the property. In reviewing the building plans, we found some areas in the site plan where they're exceeding the amount of fill, the 10-foot maximum limit that are highlighted here in the blue, with the approximate areas of each of those excess fill areas. And the amount of excess fill ranges from a little over 12 feet in area by the pool and up around 16 feet up under the house. So as we reviewed this, we noted that the owner does desire to have the primary uses of the home on one floor, but does have a second level under portion, and that's where some of the excess fill is around that particular area. Let's see here, I think I need to go, I'm going to go back here for just a minute if you don't mind, Mayor, because I didn't take the moment to point out here again, the picture on the left, there's a ridge line that kind of screens this particular lot from some of the houses and properties to the southwest, and it's really only a couple of homes further south, over 1,000 feet away, that have any direct view of the house once it is built. And so won't be anybody really getting a view of some of the tall walls and so forth that occur because of this. Most of the excess fill is under the house and under the patio. It's not the just filled areas around the house. And there are some mitigation measures we think can be taken to address some of that. So the three areas of excess fill, as shown in elevation, are shown here in this elevation of the south side of the house. So the one on the west is by the driveway, and there's really not a compelling need for that driveway to extend so far to the south. And I've talked to the applicant, they're willing to cut that back. And in doing so, then they'll reduce some of the fill in that area, and they can push that particular wall back and address that. Probably one of the most challenging places, if there is one, is this area of the home where the stem wall is so much taller than would be necessary otherwise, and it's kind of a big blank wall. And so we're talking about just making sure in their landscape plan, they produce some plantings there that help screen and buffer that wall in that location. And the other area is here around the pool, and there they have retaining walls that exceed code requirements. So that's an issue we'll be working with them through the remaining portion of the development process and making suggestions there, and that will potentially reduce some of that fill as they adjust those walls. And what's left probably will not be very significant. So staff supports the approval of the waiver with those modifications that they move the one wall back, provide the planting in the area in the middle of the house, and then work with us on adjusting the height of the retaining walls. Any questions?
Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I usually just have a very simple test on changes like this, if it's a special property or a special project. It is a lovely home. I don't know if it qualifies as a special project, but it is a special property, that steepness of the lot. So unless someone has some compelling arguments against this, I don't see a reason why not to proceed.
Councilman Watts?
Hard to keep track. I don't have, I'd like to find a way to make this work, and I think some of the recommendations that you've got under options to address cutting down some of the areas, but there is also another option, I think. And that's where the retaining walls are tall. Can't they backfill and create ground after they've built the wall and buffer that whole thing?
Mayor, Councilmember Watts, that is another option that they can do and we have employed in some cases. We could look here and see if that, that would be an option.
Yeah, I think that if, if we did something like that, take your suggestions about the south end and the three that you've got under options to mitigate some of those, and wherever we can't, then to backfill to the wall. It's on the outside anyway.
Right.
So all we're going to do is put some dirt up against it and hide that wall so it's not so doggone big.
Right.
I think that would work.
Can I get a motion? If there's no more questions? Any, any public comment? Okay.
Move to approve CFW 24-000003 for 15457 East Sycamore as recommended by staff.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Earl?
Yes.
Councilmember Callebiannakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
I have a question, Mayor. Will Building Department then offer that, that backfill of the wall to make sure we don't have anything that in those areas that it's going to be taller? Can we rely on you?
Yes, yes. I'm reviewing the building permit also, so we'll be looking at that.
Then I'm a yes.
Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item, D, has been deferred. Do we want to make any comment on that or just?
Correct. This item will be coming back in the future. We just identified some things we need to clarify with the underlying contract before we're ready to move forward with that. So we'll be coming back in the future with, with something related to this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is that C or D?
D.
Okay, I think we skipped C.
Yeah, mine's C too.
Oh. Okay, which one are we specifically deferring?
Specifically, we'll be deferring the consideration and possible action for approving the second amendment to the cooperative purchasing agreement with RoadSafe. Whatever number that is on your sheet.
Yeah. C or D, whatever one. And now we'll move to the, any possible talk or conversation about the League of Arizona Cities and Towns legislative update? I see Vice Mayor Toth.
Technically, this doesn't have to do with the league. Is that okay?
Well, let's hear what you have.
Okay. HB 2163, it just passed committee 10 to 0, Republicans and Democrats supporting it. It is a bill that would ban public schools from serving food with potassium bromate, propyl, propyl paraben, titanium dioxide, brominated vegetable oil, yellow dye 5 and 6, blue dye 1 and 2, green dye 3, red dye 3 and 40. The reason that I'm bringing this up is that I would like to ask our council to write a letter of support for this nonpartisan bill. These are all chemicals that are banned in Europe, in Canada, actually nearly every other developed country has banned these from being in food, linked to behavioral issues, cancer, autism, even mental health, because it's, it's chemicals. A lot of it's derived from crude oil. I can go on a whole ramble on it in the parking lot if you want, but the reason that I'm bringing this up is that our town, all cities and towns, in my opinion, should be coming together in support of this bill. This is something that helps secure our future. We are looking at a world where we have the most healthcare access that we have ever had in our country, and yet we have the sickest younger generations that we have ever had. had in our country, and yet we have the sickest younger generations that we have ever had. Diabetes, pre-diabetes. I, I will admit, I did have a reseeds when I got here, all right? Do as I say, not as I do, I'm trying. No, but I would ask our council to wrap this up, I would ask our council to please support this.
Do I see?
It is 21, HB 2163.
2163, is it a striker?
Not. Did I mess that up? I'm sorry. Let me do a quick look. It was beyond, it just went through committee, and it passed 10-0. Darn, I'm sorry, the... 2164, thank you. I apologize.
Do, Rachel, when we want to get a letter like that, do we just get a nod of the head, or what's, yeah?
Yep, just a direction to us would be great, we'll take care of it.
Council members, everybody in agreement with that? I think so. Okay, that's good.
Are there any other legislative items you'd like to discuss, Mayor?
What about 2371? That's the, trying to take, trying to restrict local government from building codes and that kind of thing?
Yes, that's definitely a hot topic one. It is, it's out there, it is a...
I don't think it's gone very far yet, has it? But that's one we want to keep an eye on, I think.
Yes. Is that one you'd like us to take action?
Yeah.
Towards opposing, I believe? You want to oppose that bill?
Right, yeah. Yeah, we like to have the local government decide, make decisions for us, not the state.
All righty.
Councilman Callie Vianakis?
Yeah, thank you, Erin. Yeah, this, this particular piece of legislation is very troubling. And the original draft, it was only for cities of 75,000 people or more. The, now the amended draft, what they're pushing through is the high-density part, the 25 per acre, it won't be for our town, but all the rest of the madness will. And so, yeah, this is one we really have to keep up with. And that would be to support a letter by the whole council, and you, Mr. Mayor, of opposing.
So those two right now. Any other comments? I see Councilman Skilicorn?
I would agree on 2371, that's something we should act, we should also write a letter to the governor. It did pass out of committee bipartisan, and it passed rolls, so it could pass the House floor tomorrow.
All right, we will get both of those out to all of the, our electeds.
Thank you. Any other comments on Legislative Update? Those are very informative calls, so it's good that everybody's on those. All right, so any council discussion or direct into town, direction to the town manager? No, okay. Future agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hannah, were you up there?
That's okay, it was a future agenda item, I picked the wrong thing again. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to submit for the next agenda, an amendment to Chapter 12-3 of our town code, that is our parking ordinance, to add the following language to Section 18. Currently, we have A and B, I want to throw a new B in there, so point B, except for cases in which it is necessary for special events, overnight parking is prohibited on public streets within town center. The reason for that is our businesses wake up and their parking is blocked, because someone who might live in the apartments or is staying nearby is blocking a main parking spot for that business. So that is my reasoning.
I could second that.
So we have, we have two people in support, we need a third?
I support that.
Yep, we'll get that added to an agenda.
Councilman Skilicorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've actually got two. I would love to have an agenda item, a lot of resolution, supporting ICE, Customs Immigration. If we've got a second and a third for that?
I'll second that. I'll support that as well.
Thank you. And then the second and last one, this actually could be done by the town manager, doesn't necessarily done by council, but I'd like to put out the bid, our public notices, just to make sure we're getting the best price. Put out the bid, our public notices. I'll second.
I'll support that as well.
To your point, Councilmember, we'll take a look and see if that's something that should just, we can go through administratively, or if we need to do any other further direction.
I believe you have the power to do it.
I think so, I think so too, but we'll just run it through just to double check. So in case you don't see it on agenda, we'll assume that that's happening administratively.
Okay, good. Councilwoman Earl?
Oh.
Oh, you're like, okay, you're good, okay. I caught it that time, see? Any other discussion? Okay. Can I get a motion, if that's it, can I get a motion for adjourned?
Some move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.